We actually have all our trustees here already. We will give a few more minutes, however, for everyone else to join us. all the trustees that we expect are here tonight. People rolling in, so I say we get this meeting started and at 7:03 called order this meeting of the Netherlands Board of Trustees for Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. Macy, if you'd please call the roll.
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Apt.
Here.
Trustee Kumsesma.
Here.
Trustee Danforth.
Here.
And trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Trustee Kumsesma.
Yes.
And trustee Apt.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, and I'm sure we'll all thank Patricia and Ari when we see them for joining our boards. Moving ahead into public comment on non-agenda items, you know the drill. If you want to let us know what you're thinking on anything we're not addressing in the rest of the agenda tonight, now is your chance. Catch our attention and you can have up to three minutes to let us know what's on your mind.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
I have a message that Kathleen Chappie will be calling in public comment, but she can't raise her hand as she will have feedback.
Okay. I don't see any call-in users, but we'll give here a minute.
I do see her on the attendance list.
I see her on the attendance list as well. But that's not usually, the call-in user is usually identified differently.
I understand.
Meanwhile, all I will is, my dog is trying to get my attention by moaning and groaning downstairs as being ignored by me this evening. But I don't think she has anything to say on a public comment, other than the fact that we don't provide nearly enough treats for her pleasure.
Can I speak real quick, Mayor Larson?
Please, Barb.
Barbara Hart, 245 Apollo Drive. I'm actually just checking in because I've been working the last couple of days and the last couple of weeks to find a day and time to organize a candidate's forum, and I wanted to let everybody know, since it will probably be around the time of the next meeting, that it will be in the Mountaineers this week, we hope, and some people have had conflicts with dates, so I'm still trying to firm something up. But we will definitely have something out there to the entire community within the next few days, online and in print. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much for putting that together, Barb. Kathleen, I don't see you on other than on a call-in.
So I think that she's having trouble logging in as a call-in, and so I'm going to try to log in into our WebEx and try to get her a new access code because I guess the one isn't working.
Okay. I would say we move forward, however, I know that you're the next speaker, Macy, so I don't want to put you on too many things at once, but on the election update.
I can do the election update if needed.
Okay, yeah, I think, you know, I don't want us to just sit here staring at each other for an undetermined amount of time while this is worked out. So yeah, can we move on to the informational items and give an update on the election?
Happy to. And I think Barb did a great segue, so thanks, Barb. We are in the midst of preparing ballots, and when I say we, I'm really talking about Macy. Macy's done a tremendous amount of work getting, starting to get the ballots ready. But the biggest thing is the Tabor notice. We did receive actually only four comments for the Tabor language, and so we will be mailing those out by this Friday. There were no against statements received, so those will go to every household having at least one registered voter. I'm so expect to see those that go out. We are preparing the ballots, those will go out the week of March 14th. Ballots can be turned in in a variety of different places. They can be brought to Town Hall Monday through Friday, nine to five. They can also be dropped off at the ballot box located outside the community center. That'll be 24/7, and we'll open that on Monday, the 14th. Election Day, we will also accept ballots actually at the multipurpose room in the community center. And inside the ballot, there will be a little sheet of paper that indicates all of that, but definitely getting close. The only other thing is, we will do a reach out to for election judges. If someone's interested, please contact Macy. Otherwise, we will also reach out to previous election judges, since they definitely know the ropes. People can also be poll watchers, if that's a desire, they should also reach out to Macy. Her contact information is in the packet. And then, as Barb noted, there is the goal of doing candidates forum here pretty soon. That likely will be hosted at the community center, but that's kind of all the involvement we can have. And then Barbara and her team will take it from there. So, any questions about election?
Any board members have questions for Miranda? All right, well, looking forward to seeing those ballots at the mail, and just, I just wanted to call out one note on here is that anyone who wanted an absentee absentee ballot can request that up until April 1st.
Correct, yes, thank you. Yep.
All right. Great, thank you, Miranda, and thank you, Macy, for all you've been doing on the election. I do see a call-in user on the screen, I take that that might be you, Kathleen.
Yes.
All right, we'll go back and give you three minutes for public comment.
Thank you, Kathleen Chappie, 30-year resident, 18-year business owner. I want to again address the fact that my code complaint on the term limits of the mayor has not been responded to by anyone other than the mayor, and I don't know how anyone can see that as fair or non-conflicting. But I'm going to put it out there that it still hasn't been responded to. I'm also going to put it out there that the mayor has been, after my public comments over the last three months, after I finished my public comment, he's violating his ethics rules every time by basically responding to my public comment and saying it's all baloney and false, or doesn't this, or doesn't that. And that's not appropriate behavior for the mayor of Netherlands. What I'm saying, he might not want to hear, but I shouldn't be having to say it at a public meeting after public meeting because the town board needs to respond to my code complaint. I provided nine pieces of evidence, one's the Constitution, two state statutes, the town code, case law, formal opinion by the Attorney General, Ken Salazar, I mean, and, and the fact that there's no notation that anything has changed in Netherlands with the Colorado Municipal League or term limits. So I'm throwing it out there, and I also don't like that the mayor keeps, I've been talking, public comment, introducing my name, pronouncing it correctly for eight years in front of this mayor, and last meeting, he went ahead and called me Kathy Chippy, or Kathleen Chippy. And my name is Chappie, and he's heard it more than anybody has heard it, because I've given more public comment in eight years than any other human at the meetings. So I'm notating that too, because it's just another ethics violation. I'm sick of people not being held accountable to the rule of law and treating people poorly and then accusing me of being the person that's treating him poorly, okay? I've pointed out the law, and I need a response, and I would appreciate one.
Thank you, Kathleen. I will say again that we have responded as a board to your, your complaint. You don't like the response, I'm sorry you don't like the response, but the board has responded, and I have taken to responding in this way after your comments because we have seen over the last four or five years, the dangers of allowing misinformation to go unaddressed. So I know you don't like me, I don't like, you know, you don't like what I have to say, and nothing I can do about that, but you are just simply wrong. So moving forward, we will go into our action items for this evening. We only have one action item, and Miranda will be introducing it to us.
And this already came before you, so it should be easy, but this is the extension of the Comprehensive Development Plan Intergovernmental Agreement. We did discuss this at the last meeting on February 15th. What happened is myself and Attorney Madsen worked with Boulder County's attorneys to draft this MOU that would extend the current IGA we have in place until December 31st, 2022. The plan is then within the kind of this gap is to work on doing an annexation policy with the new board. So the question before you, we do need two motions. We're asking you to approve Resolution 2022-11, and then also approve the IGA extension agreement with.
Thank you, Miranda. Yeah, as you said, we haven't seen this before, so I will throw this open to the board for questions or comments for the town staff, either about the resolution or the idea of extending. And I will begin with our trustee who's been working on this with Boulder County, trustee Kumsesma.
My position on it remains the same as the last few times that we've discussed it. I think that Netherlands needs an annexation policy, and I think that this IGA is not appropriate moving forward, and that we need significant revision to it. But in order to fulfill what I see as our legislative obligation, we need to have it in place until we have drafted those agreements and policies for Netherlands. So I'm going to advocate extending this, but with the very real intention of creating an annexation policy for Netherlands and coming back to Boulder County with an IGA that is more in our favor.
Thank you, Eric. Trustee Corvallin?
I think it's great, I mean, let's move forward with this, I say let's say yeah.
Thank you, Tanya. Trustee Danforth?
I have to agree with trustee Kumsesma that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and we don't want to just leave things hanging so the extension makes sense. So I'm going to vote for, for the extension and then wish the next board the best of luck in figuring out the finer details.
Thank you, Lindsay. And trustee Apt.
I concur, I think there is a lot of work to be done, and I think there is some major improvements that can be made, both to the annexation arrangements and the inclusion of things like industrial developments near Netherlands. So, but I will be voting to extend the agreement to the end of the year.
Thank you, Alan. Yeah, I mean, we've all talked about this, I just thought it would be good to have us all go on the record one final time and not have this sort of put through in consent agenda. I think I've stated, I'm concerned that extending it, we will get distracted by other things and find ourselves in this position again in nine months. I don't see much risk in letting it expire. But that's just kind of based on experience of having tried to negotiate with this with Boulder County before, and I really hope that the next board does take this very seriously, because I do, like everyone else, believe that a IGA is in the best interest of the town. But I believe that IGA does need to take the town's interests into account, both in terms of the issues we discussed before, and also the ones that trustee Apt has brought up in terms of what we can do to have a greater say in what's happening around our town and outside our, our sphere of influence. So this is a action item, so I will throw this open also to public comment for anyone who is with us this evening, and I see the number of people has joined grown since we called this meeting to order, so welcome, everyone. If anyone wants to weigh in on the extension of the IGA with Boulder County, now would be your chance. Catch our attention, and you can have up to three minutes to let us know your views on this. I'm not seeing or hearing, I don't see any hands up, and I haven't seen any videos pop up. So I'll bring this back to the board, and as Miranda indicated, we need two motions, a motion regarding Resolution 2022-11, and also a motion to approve the extension agreement with Boulder County. Any trustee would like to make final comments or a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2022-11.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Macy, another vote, please.
Trustee Kumsesma.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth. Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
And Mayor Larson.
No. The IGA is extended to December 31st, 2022. Thank you all for working on this, and so concludes our action items for this evening.
We'll get it done, Mayor Larson.
All right, counting on you, Eric. All right, we have six action, or discussion items, excuse me, this evening, beginning with our electronic meeting participation policy. This one comes out of the fact that, as everyone is aware, that the COVID-19 restrictions across the state and county are beginning to be rolled back. As you're all aware, this board has, has had its entire term under a state of emergency in the town of Netherlands, and we are looking to end that in the coming weeks, along with everyone else in the county. We want to make sure we hold on to some of the benefits we've seen from COVID. And one of the biggest parts of that is the, are these hybrid meetings. And so Miranda has been working on a electronic meeting participation policy, and will be introducing that to us now.
Well, so yeah, so I'm working with Attorney Madsen to draft the policy. However, we need some further clarification from you when we head into drafting this, or the resolutions, excuse me. So, so should the board trustees lift that declaration of local emergency? The next action will want us to happen at the meeting on the 15th is to adopt the policy. But we have nine questions here before you that we'd love your feedback, and I don't know, Mayor Larson, if you just want to take it kind of one at a time. But we're looking for input on these, these specific areas.
Yeah, I think really the way to handle this is basically just go down the list of questions you've got, and we'll all wait, and we've got five of us, so.
Yep, so the first question is, does the board of trustees want to limit the number of meetings that a board member can participate virtually? And so I think really kind of in considering this, like, can a board member do all of the meetings virtually? Or are they only allowed, say, four meetings a year? Would you like to kind of create that limitation on attendance? And if so, we would then modify the rules of procedure to indicate that. And I think that you do have that situation where if we're going to go hybrid, which is the intention of the 15th, is to have in person. It is, it's great to have a dynamic conversation when people are in the room, and it is tougher if one person's on the screen. And so we would like you to consider what that attendance policy for virtual might look like.
So I think what we'll do is just basically, we're going to, we should go down and kind of weigh in each of us individually, what our views are, our thoughts are on this. If you have a specific number, great, if not, if it's just kind of a general thought. And then, Miranda, you can kind of take our thoughts and comments, and we can work on those with Attorney Madsen in the coming week or two weeks.
And you may want to just loop in number two here, we did break them up, but I guess if you are looking to allow virtual attendance, should it just be limited to special circumstances, or maybe that's in addition to an attendance, so you could maybe speak to one and two here.
Yeah, because I mean, I, you know, so having been on this board for a number of years at this point, I've certainly seen the difficulties in the hybrid meeting in terms of having a discussion. It is far easier to, you know, debate each other and have a conversation about these issues in person. Certainly, you know, otherwise you have, basically you have the mayor, you have me, serving as a gatekeeper and calling on people, which is, you know, it's the only efficient way I think I've seen, found to do this, but it does stifle discussion. So personally, I am a big fan of being able to use this for, and it is again rolling in the second piece, special circumstances, you know. We all have external jobs, we all have lives where we have families or, you know, kids who might be sick, or we might be sick ourselves, and this would be providing opportunity. So personally, I like the idea of it being primarily in person, but virtual attendance being in circumstances, you know, you're traveling for work, you're traveling, your, your kid is sick and you need to stay home. So I'm a fan of that, where it would be kind of a, limiting it to, you know, four virtual meetings a year under circum, special circumstances. That would be my personal view on these sort of these first two. Trustee Apt, how about you? Speaking of playing gatekeeper.
Well, I understand your concerns, and I do think they're legitimate. And, you know, I work in both environments as well, but I think we're still living in a COVID world, and we don't know what the future brings. And I think we should give people maximum flexibility. And I think what we've talked about, and something on the board is trying to have a hybrid meeting format in general, so the public could participate in person or remotely. And I think we should give that opportunity to the board as well. And so I would currently support having it be open-ended, and let the next board decide. As COVID evolves, hopefully disappears or becomes like the annual flu, we just got a annual shot, and it's not so deadly or disruptive. But I think, given where we are right now, we really can't make the call for what's going to be coming up in the next year. So I would be supportive of leaving it open-ended and leaving it up to the board members to decide until such time that the public health issues resolve themselves more positively.
That's a really great point, yeah, thank you, Alan. Lindsay?
Well, as someone who's worked remotely since 2015, I am a huge fan of kind of being fully remote for everything. I also see the benefit to allowing a trustee to have unlimited virtual attendance in a way that we can get more people interested in being a trustee. So there are a lot of people mentioned that it's difficult for them to leave their kids if it's a single parent. They may not have caregiving options. They may not have anybody there to watch their kids, so being able to participate remotely allows them to stay home and stay with their kids. So I think that that's kind of important. And anything we can do to kind of make, make being a trustee easier on people, I think we need to embrace that.
All right, Tanya?
I agree with Lindsay and Alan. I don't know these meetings that weren't remote, it's always been remote. I think it's actually a pretty organized way of going down the line and asking people to speak. That way, people aren't just talking over each other and being rude, or but mainly that, I think it's along with everyone else in the county. But we want to make sure we hold on to some of the the benefits we've seen from COVID. And one of the biggest parts of that is the, are these hybrid meetings? And so Miranda has been working on a electronic meeting participation policy and will be introducing that to us now.
Well, so yeah, so I'm working with attorney Madsen to draft the policy. However, we need some further clarification from you when we head into drafting this or the resolutions, excuse me. So, so should the board trustees lift that declaration of local emergency? The next action will want us to happen at the meeting on the fifteenth is to adopt the policy. But we have nine questions here before you that we'd love your feedback. And I don't know, Mayor Larson, if you just want to take it kind of one at a time. But we're looking for input on these, these specific areas.
Yeah, I think really the way to handle this is basically just go down the list of questions you've got and we'll all wait. And we've got five of us, so.
Yep. So the first question is, does the board of trustees want to limit the number of meetings that a board member can participate virtually? And so I think really kind of in considering this, like, can a board member do all of the meetings virtually? Or are they only allowed, say, four meetings a year? Would you like to kind of create that limitation on attendance? And if so, we would then modify the rules of procedure to indicate that. And I think that you do have that situation where if we're going to go hybrid, which is the intention of the fifteenth is to have in person. Um it is, it's great to have a dynamic conversation when people are in the room and it is tougher if one person's on the screen. And so we would like you to consider what that attendance policy for virtual might look like.
So I think what we'll do is just basically, we're going to, we should go down and kind of weigh in each of us individually, what our views are, our thoughts are on this. If you have a specific number, great. If not, if it's just kind of a general thought. And then, Miranda, you can kind of take our thoughts and comments and we can work on those with attorney Madsen in the coming week or two weeks.
And you may want to just loop in number two here. We did break them up, but I guess if you are looking to allow virtual attendance, should it just be limited to special circumstances? Or maybe that's in addition to an attendance, so you could maybe speak to one and two here.
Yeah, because I mean, I, you know, so having been on this board for a number of years at this point, I've certainly seen the difficulties in the hybrid meeting in terms of having a discussion. It is far easier to, you know, debate each other and, and have a conversation about these issues in person. Certainly, you know, otherwise you have, basically you have the mayor, you have me serving as a gatekeeper and calling on people, which is, you know, it's the only efficient way I think I've seen, found to do this, but it does stifle discussion. So personally, I am a big fan of being able to use this for, and it is again rolling in the second piece, special circumstances, you know, we all have external jobs. We all have lives where we have families or, you know, kids who might be sick, or we might be sick ourselves. And this would be providing opportunity. So personally, I like the idea of it being primarily in person, but virtual attendance being in circumstances, you know, you're traveling for work, you're traveling, your, your, your kid is sick and you need to stay home. So I'm a fan of that where it would be kind of a limiting it to, you know, four virtual meetings a year under circum, special circumstances. That would be my personal view on these sort of these first two. Trustee Apt, how about you? Speaking of playing gatekeeper.
Well, I understand your concerns and I do think they're legitimate. And, you know, I work in both environments as well. But I think we're still living in a COVID world. And we don't know what the future brings. And I think we should give people maximum flexibility. And I think what we've talked about, and something on the board is trying to have a hybrid meeting format in general, so the public could participate in person or remotely. And I think we should give that opportunity to the board as well. And so I would currently support having it be open-ended. And let the next board decide as COVID evolves, hopefully disappears or becomes like the annual flu, we just got a annual shot and it's not so deadly or disruptive. But I think given where we are right now, we really can't make the call for what's going to be coming up in the next year. So I would be supportive of leaving it open-ended and leaving it up to the board members to decide until such time that the public health issues resolve themselves more positively.
That's a really great point. Yeah, thank you, Alan. Lindsay?
Well, as someone who's worked remotely since twenty fifteen, I am a huge fan of kind of being fully remote for everything. I also see the benefit to allowing a trustee to have unlimited virtual attendance in a way that we can get more people interested in being a trustee. So there are a lot of people mentioned that it's, it's difficult for them to leave their kids if it's a single parent. They may not have caregiving options. They may not have anybody there to watch their kids. So being able to participate remotely allows them to stay home and stay with their kids. So I think that that's kind of important. And anything we can do to kind of make, make being a trustee easier on people, I think we need to embrace that.
Tanya?
I agree with Lindsay and Alan. I don't know these meetings that weren't remote. It's always been remote. I think it's actually a pretty organized way of going down the line and asking people to speak. That way people aren't just talking over each other and being rude or but mainly that. I think it's better this way that we each get to talk and you come around as many times as we need to. I don't. Personally, I love it. I haven't missed a meeting. I think I would have missed a lot if it was in person. And I don't think I'd want to run again if it, if it weren't virtual, to be honest with you, as an option whenever we feel like it. Maybe executive session, since they don't happen very often, could be in person, but again, it might limit attendance, but that's all right, as long as it was quorum, but you might not get it. And as far as question number four, I, I think we would have to take a quorum because you wouldn't want to have just one person sitting in a room by themselves. They'd be mad. So, yeah, I think people would have to be, I mean, obviously emergencies happen where they thought they were coming and then their car broke down or something, but so yeah, that, that's the only tricky part is, you know, hosting an in-person event and having nobody show up for it. That's the only part that I could see an issue. Otherwise, I love the virtual. I had no problems with it. And I think it, you know, it's not like we have a lot of people who want to do this. And like Lindsay said, we should make it easier for people to spend hours with everyone. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Tanya. Eric?
Yeah, when I was thinking hybrid meetings, I wasn't really thinking so much about B O T members. And I was thinking mostly of the public being able to participate in a remote fashion. And there are some obvious problems with both sides of, of what has evolved here, which is to have a, a hybrid meeting in which no trustee shows up to the community center would be an absolute absurdity. And simultaneously, I can see some benefits in having that flexibility. So, I mean, I would kind of propose maybe something in between these two things. Rather than having hard caps or hard limitations, then maybe we have a more flexible policy that maybe is, you know, we do get the quorum check, you know, every, at the beginning of every month or right before the start of a new month. And perhaps a quorum check could ask for indication of in-person or remote. And then a decision could be made about the meeting depending on the responses, something along those lines. I also don't hate the idea of someone being remote with the concurrence of someone else. Let's say the mayor who presides over meetings. If they are, if they notify in advance and say, I'm going to be remote for this one. And the mayor says, go for it. We've got, you know, four people who are going to be in person. It's no big deal. But they might know that other people aren't going to be attending that meeting and it would be more of an issue then. And, and you could ask for physical presence and if physical presence wasn't possible, then potentially it would just be a non-attendance. I mean, right now we are always online and we frequently have folks who are not attending because they're traveling for work or other issues. So I'm not really sure that making it that kind of a policy, like you need to be traveling for work or illness makes sense because I don't think they come anyway. So like, I don't think we've been attending anyway if we're traveling for work or illness. So I don't know. I, I would like to see something a little more flexible where there's notification required in advance and perhaps a concurrence of the person presiding over the meeting who would be the mayor.
I'd like to jump in real quick. I'd like to say that in the car, out of Kansas, I've attended meetings at my in-laws' home. I've attended meetings at airports. I've attended meetings in foreign countries. I haven't missed a meeting. Okay, and I would, and so I, the fact that someone's traveling is really not an excuse. Yeah, well, there's somebody who's absent every time. And then there's people who are just absent and that's to be expected. I just, yeah, I honestly, if this is going to be something that isn't going to be an option for the near future, I'm going to have to withdraw my what do you call it?
Dominance? Yeah.
Well, no, my, and what do you call it when you're running for something?
Candidate.
Yeah.
Well, what, from what it sounds like is
Yeah, I need to know, you know, what's going on.
And for what it sounds like, you know, I am kind of waiting the comments we got you, from you, Tanya and Eric, because you are the two that potentially are still going to be here. The rest of us are, aren't going to be here in a month. So it sounds like, Miranda, a flexible policy, perhaps with the idea that Eric had of a sort of a check-in to determine whether or not we have an in-person component based on, you know, you know, the flexibility. I think just a flexible policy, but not setting any hard limits on attendance.
So can I ask some clarifying points? And I think for four, that's why we had four here, like to set up the room takes a substantial amount of time. So is the, is the thought trustee Kims Ismael that if we didn't have a, at least quorum in the room itself, we would then just flip all to virtual and notify as such?
I think that that makes sense to me. And I, and I do think that, that we're going to have to clearly articulate policy-wise that kind of the last minute stuff cannot be sort of a regular occurrence. Like you can't just bail, everyone can't just bail at the last minute and say, we have to be online, right? We're just going to have to be a little more, have a little more forethought when it comes to attendance and the mode that we're attending in.
Okay.
So I want to swing back here because there's that associate question of the executive sessions. And this is one where I do kind of feel like is, is it's a separate situation where we're always, you know, executive session, you're discussing sensitive items. So personally, I'm a, I believe those are something in person. We've had, you know, it's just questions about information security and, and who else is hanging around outside of the camera's view? So my view is executive session should be treated more stringently than B O T meetings.
Well, and Mayor Larson, can we, I probably kind of just these questions as we were thinking, but I think that also needs to be considered for quasi-judicial. We do have some concerns about quasi-judicial hearings being conducted in a hybrid.
Right. So these are kind of the more formal steps or formal meetings of the board where we're not having, like we are right now, a discussion. But, you know, either making personnel questions or dealing with a lawsuit or dealing with a quasi-judicial. And should those be highlighted in a, or more for in-person meetings? And this could be part of that flexibility thing that Eric was saying, where if we know there's a quasi-judicial item coming before the board at the second meeting of a month, then that could be an emphasis of in-person attendance on that meeting more so than the first. I, I certainly thinks, think that, but would be very curious to hear Eric and Tanya for certainly, but the, the other trustees as well. So Eric?
I'm, I guess the executive session, I think, makes sense. There's, because it is an executive session, the very nature of that is that it needs to be private between the board and that it's sensitive information. Yeah, I think it should be in a, in a room. And it's been, it's, it has been awkward having executive sessions remotely like this. So that one I definitely see. Quasi-judicial, I guess I'm not completely seeing what the big difference is doing it hybrid. It's a public meeting anyway. There's not really sensitive information happening in a quasi-judicial. So
So the concern is access. Yeah, the concern is access. Like if someone, say, did not have the ability to do call in virtually and needed that option of coming in person, you know, I think that's, I guess that's where we look at hybrid being a possibility. But the other preference is to do where someone to come get public comment, they could do so in the room itself. And so I think if anything, quasi-judicial really should no longer be held entirely virtual. It should definitely at least be hybrid to ensure complete access.
Right. So that could be
Complete later.
That could be something that links with that question four in terms of a quorum where if we know we have a quasi-judicial matter coming before the board, then maybe only two trustees can show up in person. Okay, but you have the in-person component to provide access for those who want to provide public comment in person.
I think that's
Why is that different than a regular? Just because it's quasi-judicial?
I think the challenge is right now, if say we're having a hearing tonight and someone had no ability to log into our system, then we're prohibiting them from giving comment. Where if we then do a hybrid that would allow them to do, come in person to give that comment.
Well, they've emailed to you before in the past and you've read them when
Yeah. So the, so the big thing is not stunting any sort of access. So while that's always an option, if someone was very passionate about giving their testimony in person, it's ideal that we're not limiting their ability to do so.
Right. Okay.
So we could just say that for quasi-judicial matters, we must have an in-person component and there must be enough trustees in order to have that in person.
Doesn't, doesn't say it can't be hybrid, but
Right.
there will be an in-person component.
Right.
Lindsay, Alan, guys agree with that?
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable.
I think that makes sense. I mean, I think that the bottom line is if you cannot get a quorum without somebody being remote, but you're going to have some people in person. And then you make it so that maybe a person or two who cannot make it in person is able to connect. So you have your quorum. But in general, try to do it in person for the reasons mentioned.
Great. So I, I think we can actually skip five because I think we've determined that hybrid is the way we go and therefore they would be able to vote in either in-person or hybrid settings. So I'm going to skip to seven. Do you want to include any technological requirements such as having your camera on at all time? What happens if there's a bad connection? Is there anything from a technology standpoint you want to include in this policy?
My personal view is given our, our pseudo-rural nature, no.
Yeah. Yeah, we can't. We just can't. It's not practical.
Tanya, Lindsay, Alan?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Do you want any like technologic, like technology requirements such as keeping your camera on at all times? Anything like that?
I, I don't know why we would. If you guys want to, we could do that. I could, I, some people have bandwidth problems and many times I've had to turn my camera off when I'm talking because you guys said you can't hear me.
Since the you know, our town attorney expressed concerns about that, maybe the, the rule of thumb is at some point the camera's on, people can see you, and then as necessary, you can turn it off for bandwidth. Because I do think the internet is very unpredictable, especially up here.
And I, I think that we just need to consider anyone who's logged in and is a trustee to whatever hybrid system we have to be present basically at all times, whether they're in front of their computer or not, they are, they are technically present and responsible for that presence. And so it would be important for them, I think, to actually be present because otherwise they're going to bear responsibility for things that they're not there for, which is never good.
Right. And I think that kind of ties into question nine in terms of, you know, participation delays or interference with meetings. If you're, if you're logged in and attending a meeting, but you know, your cameras off, you're going to do the laundry, you're taking the dog out for a walk, things like this, and you come back and are asking, you know, questions that have been answered or are doing something, you know, in some way interfering with the the motions of the meeting, then that would be as a, as out of policy that we need to have as well.
Well, I do think that that might be covered in the policies we already have. If it isn't, then we should just make reference to those. I mean, if it is, sorry, that we should make reference to those and say it will be treated in the same way that any interference in the, in the regular course of the meeting would be treated by any trustee, whether they're in person or not.
That makes sense.
Lindsay?
When we were talking about the video requirements, we're just talking about for trustees, right? Not participants.
Trustees and, and I would argue also for staff when appropriate. So then kind of the feeling for staff is when presenting, have it on. And that's, but I think for trustees, you are connecting with one another all the time. And so it makes sense to try and have it on when you're able to do so.
Got it.
Yeah, but not for the public. No, we won't put the requirement on them.
But they want to, they're welcome to.
Of course. Okay. So I think that leaves question eight.
Yeah. So we just need to know. So I just want to clarify how the hybrid system works. So the intention is to have the board of trustees, this is kind of your announcement, we'll follow up that we'd like to do the March fifteenth meeting hybrid. So as many of you who can come in person as possible would be great. What we have are two cameras on the wall, mounted on the wall. One will have the Brady Bunch screen of the community members and any board members not present. The other will have the agenda. But I think, you know, as Mayor Larson, if you're in the room and you're calling the people who are next to you, how do you engage with the person on the screen? Because it will look like that Brady Bunch boxes of people. That there is two-way communication though, where the people on the screen can talk to the board and vice versa. So it's not just a listen only. And then we'll kind of, we'll control it the same way we do currently with weather. But it is, it would be a unique dynamic when you have half in the room and say maybe half on.
Yeah. I think this is definitely going to be a learning as we go kind of thing, because even this has been a learning as we go, you know, catch our attention, Jants, you know, start speaking. You know, I think it'll be some of that as the new board figures out the procedure. I think I think this might be something we just need to postpone until we figure out kind of what works best with this hybrid system we have. Because I don't, I, I haven't seen it yet in person. I haven't seen it functioning. So I, you know, I'm sitting here right now and I can see a list of all the petitions on the side where people raise their hand. Is, I don't know if that's the same as we're going to see there. So I would say this is something we need to address again in a couple of months as we've learned a little bit, the function of our hybrid system.
I think that's a really, a really good point because back when I was still publishing computer books, I went to a conference by Microsoft and Bill Gates was speaking and his system went down completely. And his presentation was about how computers could sing and dance and do anything we wanted them to do. And they never did get the system back up for Bill Gates. So anything that can go wrong will occasionally go wrong. So.
And we're not promising the fifteenth will be perfect, but we do want to give it a shot. I think it's either no better meaning than a board meeting. The advisory boards and commissions are not often attended by the public, so bear with us while we do it. But I do agree, there'll be some kinks to work out and the policy can then be amended at any point in time. We'll just adopt that resolution.
Miranda, is it going to be like where the person who's talking is the main, is the only person on the screen? And then when, when they're not talking, it's just the little characters?
Yeah, we can make those changes. You know, I think that one nice thing is that there will be more of us who can adjust what's on the screen. And so we can flip views to be that the speaker versus the
I think, I think that makes sense that if the person's talking, they're the only face on the screen. And then when they're done, it goes back to just everybody.
Okay.
Brady Bunch.
Yeah, I think it also would probably be pretty convenient to be logged in, even if your camera and microphone are off when you are in person. Like, so you can see participant panels and, you know, see things like that going on, like to, to only, to be like far away looking at it from a distance, I think would be very strange.
Yeah. Well, that's what the kids did at school when they did this all last year. And the kids who were at school had their Chromebooks and then they could talk to their friends at home. And then there was the teacher was doing stuff also on the board, but the board was connected to the Chromebook. So everything she was doing or he were doing on the board was going on the Chromebook. So it was pretty seamless, I thought, at least for my kid.
Yeah, I think the only thing there is a trustee would have to bring your own device. We don't have extra devices for you to use, but if that is a possibility, the person would just want to make sure their camera, their microphone and their sound was off. So we didn't get the feedback, but it is definitely a great suggestion.
Trustees have any other just kind of thoughts on, you know, things we want to throw in there, things that might not have fallen within the nine questions that Miranda came up with?
Well, I was just going to say, can, even though they're smaller and they're not that well-attended by the public, there's, I think we could still test this at an advisory board meeting, even if it were just half of the members of the board were in person and half were remote. I mean, we could even organize that on purpose, right, to, to, to do a test run.
Well, so all advisory board, the, the, under this plan, all advisory board and commissions will have to be set up the same way the board of trustees meetings are set up in order to allow this system to work. It's just that Jamie Seifer won't be able to come back until the fifteenth, which is why we'd like to try this with that board. Because he'll actually be here in case there were any issues. And then assuming no problems, we'd love for Prostab to be the next meeting to go hybrid and then stagger from there. But unlike historically, Prostab did not have the room set up like a board meeting. They will now. And the D D A and planning commission already did. And so there will be a little bit more format. And the DDA and planning commission already did. And so there will be a little bit more formality to how those meetings are structured.
I think that's.
We just had a board room that was already set up.
Yes. No, Central City has that lovely. You know, maybe someday, but yeah. And so that's the big thing is like, I do think the quorum piece will be huge because I'd hate to see the community center staff put a couple hours where the work that goes into setting these up for nothing.
Well, I know attending many sustainability advisory board meetings over many years. I can count on one hand, the number of times the public has shown up. So I'm hoping that the hybrid approach will make it easier for the public to participate.
That's really what we're trying to preserve from this last two years. Moving forward is this ability to have, you know, people just kind of dialing in and listening while they're going about their household chores and staying more involved in the town, but without having to come out and join us for three, four hours on a Tuesday night. So this is a discussion item. So I want to actually throw this open to get public comment as well. You've kind of heard what we're talking about. If you'd like to add any things that you think we've missed, now would be your chance. As a reminder, if you're on your phone, star six to unmute yourself and otherwise catch our attention. Not seeing any. Bring it back. Anything else from the board on this item?
No, so we'll bring this back as a policy for additional review at your meeting on the 15th. And please plan to come in person if you can.
Right, which we will be rolling this out and experimenting with our new hybrid system from the community center for any of those who can make it up there. All right, moving on to our next discussion item, which is the Safer Main Streets Initiative Grant. Miranda?
Sorry, I just realized I had a spelling error in this agenda item title. But yes, Safer Main Streets. If you recall correctly, this came before you with Chris. He applied for this grant to improve the crosswalks between the RTD parking lot and the library and also connecting First Street over kind of near this New Moon and Town Hall area across to Nature's Own. The plan is to do traffic calming components. We will also have the signage that you can hit notifying that someone is crossing the crosswalk. We are currently seeking CDOT approval of this site plan that we provided in here. So so we're also looking for your feedback. And I do want to clarify because this is a CDOT grant, there's not a ton of wiggle room, but we'd just love to hear your thoughts about these improved areas, pedestrian crosswalks. In addition to these developments here, we also will be improving the sidewalks, just to ensure more walkability. We're just looking for your thoughts on this.
I'll kick off. So this does involve bringing kind of bringing back the crosswalk from Nature Zone to that corner, which I know it's kind of been shunted away and kind of shut down, but this does involve bringing that back as an official crosswalk.
Yeah. So the police department, they were the ones who didn't love that crosswalk there, but kind of ultimately identified that given, of course, the way it dips down, it's just going to naturally create where people want to cross. And so might as well just make the best of it and do the traffic calming and the signage for the crosswalk and making it more designated. Than trying to forego it altogether. I think people have seen like you're crossing both locations no matter. So.
Yeah, nothing's going to stop the behavior of the public there.
Just going to like accept that this is what's going on and make it better and safer.
Yeah, okay. Now that was, yeah, I think it looks great. I look forward to having crosswalks again and painted cross, you know, some kind of indication again. Tanya, any thoughts on this?
Uh, no, I think it's going to be fine. I'm glad that crosswalk's back. I think we could shut down the other one if we wanted to, but I guess there's no point. No, no real criticisms or comments.
Yeah, without correcting the sidewalk there, which is not something we can do out of this specific grant, I think it's again, it just, it's going to flood people there no matter what, just because of the nature of that dip.
It's fine.
So I mean, embrace it.
It's fine. Like I know, maybe it was even Chris who had mentioned it that like, what we really need is a over the highway crosswalk or an under the highway crosswalk. That is truly the only way to really help our traffic problems. Because a lot of our traffic problems are caused from people just constantly crossing there and never stopping in the car stop. So I don't know, you know, that's a future possibility for future grants, but to keep that in the radar for what really needs to happen there is over or under, I think. To really be safe and to keep the traffic flowing, which is really a big problem. But as far as like Jefferson by the library and all that, I think that's great. So thanks.
Eric?
When when it says improved pedestrian crosswalk, I know last time we talked about this, it wasn't, it weren't completely clear on the manner of improvement. Can, do we have updates on that? Are they, is it all going to be like a physical improvement that rather than just paint? Like, is it going to be stamped concrete? Like, how's it going to work?
Yeah, correct. Yeah. So we're still working through those logistics with CDOT, but that is the intention is to have that section of the crosswalk be a different type of material, or at least that stamped concrete, so that it designates it as such. It definitely will be raised. That's not something CDOT will consider, but it will. You kind of can see we gave a little bit of this idea of this kind of paver-esque.
Right.
Designation there.
And you said they were going to be raised?
They will not. CDOT was not willing to consider raising.
None of them.
None of them.
Okay.
However.
Before we were talking about just the one to the library being.
Yeah, the plan though, is that the the speed limit sign that's like right over here by Highway 72 that brings it down to 25 will actually be pulled closer to that curve near the fire department. So designating that people should be slowing down much earlier than feeling like they have to slow down here. You know, of course, you're still going to look at that quick 45, 35, 25 around that corner, but the goal is try to get them to slow down shortly after the curve versus trying to do so right before the library.
And coming out of the traffic circle, is the speed limit sign going to be moved further back?
There was no discussion about moving the speed limit signs here further back, although we can, we absolutely can talk about that.
I mean, it seems like it should go up to 35 after the library crosswalk and no sooner than.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't, I don't, Nathan didn't share if that had been discussed, but I'll double check.
I guess maybe when we were talking about it before, I was misunderstanding which 35 we were talking about. And maybe we were talking about coming back around the curve rather than out of the traffic circle. So.
That's been the most concerned for. For Public Works is what, or excuse me, for the police department is coming around that corner is where they're seeing the slowdown that that's become an issue. The people are like.
But a speed up sign right before a crosswalks doesn't seem particularly logical.
Agreed. So I will talk with them about moving that further west as well.
And the only other concern that I have was I just want to make sure that the pavers, the brick style pavers that are marked there for the sidewalks, that those won't cause problems with snow removal, that that will actually be okay for snow removal.
Yeah, I've actually, I did actually talk with Nathan about that. And he said between that and also redoing the sidewalks, it will improve, make it easier for a snow removal. Right now that crusher find is pretty tough. And so having an overlay that our tractor can actually drive on will assist. And then but we did confirm with CDOT that they do not have concerns about clearing the roadway itself with these papers.
So if we were to use like a mechanized device like a tractor on those pavers, it wouldn't tear the papers up and ruin.
Correct. Yep. That was the whole point. Because right now it is hard for that that tractor we use to hit these crusher find trails.
Right.
So then they kind of become unmaintained, which is not.
I was just making sure that we weren't halfway fixing it. And that we were all the way fixing it.
We are all the way in.
Great. That's, that's what I've got.
Lindsay? You're still muted, Lindsay. Here, if you're on your phone, star six. There we go.
You can hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So I'm really happy to see this coming back and seeing the improved sidewalks and the crossings. Certainly, whenever I've gone downtown, I look at those crosswalks and just shake my head because you can't, you can't even see them. You can't see the paint anymore. And it's very dangerous. So this is absolutely needed. And I thought, I had it in my head already that some of these were going to be improved with a different project. There is the KIP project.
Yeah.
Is this overlapping with that now?
Yeah. So this is in addition to, so the Safer Main Streets is really specifically for crosswalks, but we were able to focus on the sidewalk on that north side there. But so Safer Main Streets though connects you from RTV kind of down, down and around Catman Dew's buildings and CenturyLink into the visitor center and then will connect you to these crosswalks going onto First Street. And the paver plan for those, I'm sure trustee Cruz is my one to know this, is we'll mirror the paver plan here. And we're also talking with CDOT on their Highway 119 project where they plan to redo the sidewalks on the south side of town, doing the same thing. So we do have three simultaneous projects going on that will all mirror each other.
Okay.
And maybe if you approve the next item.
And I'm wondering, is there any way to expand and include additional areas in this project? Or are we already too late to add in things?
Yeah, unfortunately, we're too late. See, that's pretty strict about whatever was in our application is what we have to move with. And so anything else we do, we'd want to pursue under alternative funding.
Okay. I guess I'm just hoping that at some point the board through grants or through, you know, funding of some sort, maybe the DDA, that we really can work on just even small improvements in our downtown. You know, it's, it's really tough to walk by our little shops and especially, you know, I was walking to Decent Bagel and could not find an easy way to get by and get there other than going out into the street and then back in. It's like that one spot is so terrible. So you know, if it was just extended out a little bit and then just slap some concrete on it or something, it would make it 10 times better to be able to use that. But that's something I really hope that we can find a way to just do minor improvements. We don't have to do the whole thing, but I want to see improvements.
I'm wishing I'd called on you last because that would be a great segue to the next discussion item.
I have another question real quick before we segue.
But well, no, no, we're not. Sorry. Let me get Alan first because we haven't heard from him and then swing back to you.
Yeah.
Sorry, Lindsay, were you, was that it with you, Lindsay? Not to cut you off.
Oh, yes, yes. And I'm probably going to say the same thing on the next item.
Okay, Alan.
I just say major thumbs up. Looks great. Full speed ahead.
All right.
I mean, full, full speed slowdown for the crosswalk.
After the crosswalk. Yeah. All right, Tanya, you had something else?
Mike, uh, turned it off when I thought, um, oh, well, my biggest issue is with snow removal of all these new sidewalks that we're going to have. And we don't really remove the snow timely now. Are we going to be able to find a staff that's dedicated to keeping them from being icy? Because that that's my main concern. I know that we're short-staffed and it's an ongoing issue for everybody in this world right now, but
with.
Yeah, great. Sidewalk, great, but if it's covered in ice, not great.
Yeah. So I actually met with Nikki Dunn, who's a parks manager, say, and so we are looking to hopefully bring on two more park streets employees. I remember there is only one sidewalk technician. And so by adding more to that team, we can create positions that can focus specifically on sidewalk maintenance and then have a crew that focuses on allowing the streets. So that is, yes, so definitely a part of this and getting the robust staffing. It's just a matter of getting them in the door and keeping them here.
That that's the truth. Yeah. And yeah, it looks like we're going to be increasing a lot of sidewalks if we get all these grants. So, which is great, but.
Yes, this grant is set to be completed in 2024. The CDOT process can take a while. So TIPS is looking to be done in 2023. So and then the Highway 119 project, which is improving the roadway leading up to the Eldora turnoff, as well as those sidewalks, that's looking to be done in 2024, 2025. So they give us time to get the staffing in. And I do think as we head into future budget year, taking a look at that streets and parks salary budget and seeing what adjustments we can do, which would allow us to not only bring on more, but potentially then adjust the pay, the starting pay of who we do bring on.
All right, great. Thank you.
All right. We'd love a chance here, open this up for the public, of course. If anyone would like to talk about these sidewalks and crosswalks that we're looking at, now would be your chance. Let us know what you're thinking by catching our attention. Again, call in users, star six to unmute yourself if you want to speak. Right? I guess I'll bring this back to the board. Miranda, did you get what you were looking for from the board of trustees?
Yes, and we will continue to bring this back before the board once we have CDOT's green light on the plan too. So not the last time you'll see this.
Nope. All right. Thank you, Miranda. Thank you, everyone, for your thoughts on this one. Let's move on to a different sidewalk.
All right. So I brought Revitalizing Main Streets before you a couple of months ago, and the intention was to, we were invited to reapply. And so we wanted to talk with the DDA about doing match funding to reapply. The only difference from the application Chris submitted in May 2021 was that we would remove the loading zone and not worry about the power lines since it was going to be incredibly expensive. I did bring it before the DDA. One of their concerns was that they weren't really wanting to pursue any grants if there wasn't buy-in from the building owners or the tenants on First Street, and if there could be a possible negative impact in doing so. There were two owners who had requested that we not pursue this grant at this time and therefore chose not to move forward. Since that time, this grant has turned into a rolling grant, which is great. And Attorney Madzen had shared this Supreme Court case with me, which really prompted us to reconsider this grant. And so in essence, what this Supreme Court case that I included in the packet says is that, you know, if the municipality is aware of the dangerous conditions, you know, we're obviously held liable for that, you know, especially if we know our, we knowingly see the problem, we haven't marked it with orange paint or put out a cone or any of that to address that situation. So absolutely can protect ourselves on First Street with some of that combing. But there's so many problems with the sidewalk on the north and south side. It kind of would feel like cones and orange spray paint everywhere. And so perhaps because this grant is before us, we really should think about redoing the sidewalks on the north and south side and and talking over with the kind of the grant, the funders and JBA. If we're going to go for this grant, we really need to go for both. It's really a hard sell to say, we're only going to improve the south side because there's no problem with the north side, when that's clearly not true. And if anything, the north side needs more care and attention. So what we're asking is kind of that green light to move forward with this again. As a reminder, no match is required. However, it makes us more competitive. So we also are curious if the board does want us to move forward with this grant, if we should be revisiting with the DDA doing the 10% max of $90,000. So that's kind of why this is here again. And we'd love to hear your thoughts on this Revitalizing Main Streets grant, given this new legal impression.
Yes, yes, yes.
I was going to say, Lindsay, you want to talk first on this one?
I'm still very excited for this. Sorry, I, the names of the grants were so similar. But I thought we were already moving on to this one. So yes, absolutely. 100% I think we need to do everything in our power to improve our sidewalks to get people out of the street and to be able to get people safely from one end of the street to the other. Even if it doesn't stand for that many years, even if there are projects that are going to be happening, since there's nothing currently before us, any plans to change that area? I think we, it would be irresponsible to wait. And I really don't like the idea of landowners kind of holding the town hostage for some kind of hypothetical plan. I think. I, I think we need to do something. And, and this can be the holdover until that revitalization of downtown happens. This is the way to do it.
You, Lindsay? Alan?
Sorry, I couldn't get unmuted. Yeah, I hardly agree with Lindsay. Badly needed accident waiting to happen, the sooner the better.
Eric?
I feel like I keep on seeing more and more harrowing sights on First Street, the more that I'm now paying attention to what's actually going on, especially with folks who are, have, are differently abled when it comes to mobility. It is so clearly a massive, massive problem. I mean, maybe we could just pour a bucket of orange paint down First Street just to say it's all, it's all a danger. Because at this point, that's, that's how it feels, especially in the wintertime. It's, you know, really exacerbated and really highlights that this needs to be done. I do have a question. The ADA accessible spots are in the same place in this plan that we're looking at right now as they, as they are now, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And the only trouble I have with that is that they are not anywhere near a way to cross the street.
Okay.
Right, so an ADA space gets you to the now vacant, you know, pub and grill spot on the corner and it gets you to the shops on the north side of the street. But that south side is still inaccessible.
Okay.
And I think that we need some way to get across the street from those ADA spots. And if that means moving the ADA spots, then I think that's what should be done.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely move the ADA spots, you know, or we had talked about. So this, again, tying back into the other grant, trustee Anfort, this is Safer Main Streets, is that we could look at opting this crosswalk that goes from nature zone over to kind of the crosscut area and then move you and exited your vehicle here.
That's precisely what I was thinking, ADA in front of the PI.
Yep.
Where the curb extension is as well, so it would allow a van to pull up and, you know, pull a sliding door open and maybe even a lift gate to get somebody in a wheelchair out, much more accessible than down on the slope, I think.
Okay.
But otherwise, yes, I think this really desperately needs to be done.
Thank you, Eric. Tanya?
Yeah, good catch, Eric. That is a much better spot for it. I imagine they're extra wide and everything, so. Uh, yeah, let's do it. I, I agree. If something happens and they get ripped up, then they'll get rebuilt. But for now, we need them, so. Yeah, First Street's really treacherous in the winter.
All right, thank you, Tanya. I can't really add much to that, except that I think, you know, obviously this will come back as a discussion item this evening will come back. I think we should definitely look at a match to make this as likely to be funded as possible. If that's the DDA that provides that match, great. If that's the town that needs to do it from our general fund, I say we look at that as well. Because like the town attorney pointed out, the Cal Supreme Court judgment, this is a lawsuit waiting to happen and we need to move on this, fix it. And while waiting for the grant to come in, or hopefully to win the grant, and then for the construction after that, I think we do also need to look at what we can do to, you know, like Eric said, let's just paint downtown orange and let everyone know that this is a danger zone and.
I thought I was like, oh, that's a lot of orange paint. I, yeah.
Let's, let's mitigate our risk as much as we can while also pursuing this, this critically needed fix.
Okay, I do, and I do think what's great is, is there's still more outreach to be done. We didn't hear from anyone last time, but as you will see in the packet, generally, there was a lot of great support and I had some good discussions with people. Removing that loading zone, of course, was huge. It just, but when we're looking solely at the sidewalks, not only were people happy to hear about it, they were really engaged and wanting to discuss how that could support their business and just the whole downtown area. So that was really nice to see that there was that support.
All right, I'm going to again throw this open to the public. You've heard us. Let us know what you're thinking. If you've got new thoughts on this that we haven't heard, catch our attention.
This is David Sykes.
David?
Yeah, I thought that the, I thought that the DDA approved funding for a smaller version of this in January. I couldn't find the minutes. Is that the case?
Am I good to respond, Mayor Larson?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So the DDA was willing to commit the match of $90,000 if there was buy-in from the business owners. So when we received the two property owners concerned and asking that we not move forward with it, that was kind of the, what put a kibosh in this little bit. So I'm hopeful that if I go back and just say, there are two property owners who are concerned, but we'd like to move forward kind of regardless and still ask for that funding from them. I'm hopeful that they'll still approve it.
So you'll be taking it back to the DDA?
Yep, so I've already prepared their executive director that depending on tonight's discussion, I will put this on their agenda for the ninth.
Okay.
Thank you, David. Anyone else?
Yes.
I'd like to give a public comment. Hello?
I heard Kathleen and Ron, so we'll go Kathleen and then Ron.
And let Ron go first, thank you.
Okay, Ron, the floor is yours. Ron? Uh, if you were the call-in user, you need to unmute yourself. Well, either way, I guess.
You didn't hear me?
There we go, you're back now.
All right, I said I deeply resent those of you who've said I am trying to hold the town hostage. I am not in favor of this because I do plan to redevelop it. It's only been a year now since I have completed the assemblage of the block and I am planning on going forward with it. I will personally go and lobby against this grant to the body that you're applying to because it doesn't make sense at this time. And so the DDA considered that and they said, if you want to do the south side, go right ahead. But the north side is going to be redeveloped very soon. And so that's where I stand on this issue. And if you choose to ignore it, I will fight it the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Kathleen, you're up.
Kathleen Chivai, 30-year resident, 18-year business owner. Yeah, I, as a business owner, I'm concerned about how long it's going to take if we're ripping up both sides. This was something that I had been begging for back since 2005. I, I agree with Ron, the timing seems off. You know, we've had this liability the whole while. I've brought it up numerous times. I see people trip up the step onto the side of the street my business is on. I see people trip off and onto the other side. It never made sense to me why there was wheelchair access up at the front of First Street, but then when you go down, there, there was no ramp. It was a staircase. So that didn't make sense to me. So at this point, as a business owner, I'm concerned about how long anything's going to take when we're ripping up both sides of the street, because that's not good for anybody's business. And secondly, I'm also offended when I hear people say that someone has taken the town hostage on the sidewalks. I've been asking for the sidewalks to been repaired since 2005. So, um, and I, again, think that that's another ethics problem to be saying stuff like that about people at public meetings and especially when it's untrue. And I'd like to zero back, circle back to Mayor Larson back commenting on my last public comment and said, I'm wrong. Except he's provided no evidence that I'm wrong, except a very arrogant letter of response telling me I'm wrong. I provided nine pieces of evidence on term limits and I'm sick of the mayor after I hang up the phone and can't have a say to come in and say anything about what I've said. That is not ethical. You're not supposed to give any comment. And I'm not wrong, and if you're going to say I'm wrong on public record at a public meeting, then I suggest you provide some evidence, Mayor Larson.
Anyone else from the public want to comment on sidewalks?
Um, I, I have a question.
I was gonna say, I'm bringing it back to the board for questions or comments. Tanya?
Um, why couldn't we do the south side? Do the area by denim and lace that doesn't have a sidewalk and then connect it to the bagel place and have a proper crosswalk? And really, literally do everything except for, you know, the rock shop, the PI and all that. And since, since that very, it sounds like it might just get tore down soon anyway. Doesn't, don't you think, and maybe do like minimal stuff, like where the handicap spot is, to get people up there so that they can access all those stores? Do, do a bit, but focus our energies on the south side denim and lace where there's no sidewalk. I mean, because there is a decent sidewalk there, there's those stairs. But if you have the handicap spot on the other side, it doesn't matter because they can access all those businesses anyway. I'm just thinking, you know, it, it, that way, you know, Ron's not upset because, and that way, that sidewalk's not getting tore up so that those businesses can still have people coming in. And, you know, we do have to be conscious of how the whole thing goes down so that we're not impacting the businesses for a year.
Yeah. I talked with the, the funding group and, and the kind of the, because obviously the south was our original plan. But the sentiment was, the whole point is to revitalize Main Street. So if you're saying the north side doesn't need focus, but yet it does, it does impact our competitiveness in this grant.
That's what I'm saying, because wings of lace and.
You just want to do part of the north side.
I mean, all of that, that's half of, I mean, that's a lot.
But they're all owned by the same property owner. And it's my understanding that.
Fight the whole thing.
I understand that, but, um, I mean, I understand that, it's true. But that, we do need it there and, you know, I would just, but just like, I don't know, I guess, what's the plan? I mean, I guess we can ask Ron, he's here. I mean, what's the plan? Are they all going down at the same time? Or are you working? I thought he was initially going to be starting with some of the stuff on Second Street first.
Yeah, I, I just, and maybe just super quick, I just, I, if we were to do both the north and south, of course, we'd be mindful of how it happened. We would only do one side at a time. I don't think it makes sense to rip up the whole thing. I do want to caution that if you choose to do just a section, be mindful of what the most hazardous sections are because that doesn't remove our liability if we're just doing it in piecemeal. I think we really need to be careful of what's the most treacherous spaces.
Well, I mean, the stuff in front of the PI is pretty good. It's one of our best sidewalks in the area. That's just my two cents. You know, I do hate to do all this, you know, and then have it, it all get ripped out in a year. But I guess, I guess, I mean, it doesn't hurt to apply. And, you know, because I, we do need to get it done. I mean, there's liability all over this town. I mean, all over every towns, not just this town. So I wouldn't just focus on the liability aspect of this because, I mean, the ice on the street, frozen dead guy days. I mean, if you worry about liability, it's, it's there. Anyway, that's just my two cents.
I was going to just reinforce what Tanya just said there, that while the liability argument is, I can see the value of that in terms of negotiation and bringing this back to the DDA. I, I would urge everyone just to remember why this is actually important. It's not really the town's liability, but, but for the needs of our residents and for the needs of the people who come and visit our town, this is, this really does need to be done. And so I would urge anybody who is planning on something that this would hamper in some way to spend most of their time working on that project and actually getting it done rather than fighting this project. Because I don't think that that's a productive way of moving forward. I don't think that's a productive way of engaging with town at all, in fact. And I would really urge you to work on your own projects. And if there actually is a permit pulled, there actually is construction ongoing, I'm sure that we can come to some kind of reasonable, reasonable accommodation. But beyond that, this needs to be done and we can't just wait for an indeterminate amount of time to do it.
Here, here. I, I completely agree with you, Eric. It just, it seems like this has to be done. And like I said, this, the, the property owner who wants to hold it up, I don't think that the sidewalks are really going to have an impact on him moving forward at his project anyways. Even if these, these plans to revitalize an entire block of our downtown were submitted tomorrow, they still have to go through a lengthy process of being approved by the planning commission and then going through all of our different boards and being approved. And it's, it's a lengthy process and then trying to get construction started. You know, this is a long, long process to build, you know, any building. So with that in mind, even if things were submitted tomorrow, I still think for that period of time that we could have nice sidewalks, I think that would still be great and it would still be worth it. So I, I want to move forward and, and have sidewalks. And I just, I don't see how us improving those sidewalks would prevent anything else from happening. There's no way that those conflict with each other. It's town money, it's our, our thing. It's, it's how we view our town and how we want to treat our residents. And I think it's very important that we have a safe environment, a safe downtown.
Other board comments? Miranda, do you feel like you've gotten what you needed from the board?
Yes, I'll bring this before the DDA on the ninth to get their feedback on the funding and then bring it back before the Board of Trustees to talk through that piece on the 15th ideally.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, onto another grant, Housing Planning Program Grant.
No, I'm on a grant move here. All right. So the Housing Planning Grant is a current opportunity through DOLA where town could apply for funding to do a housing study. Our last housing study was, it was really, and the needs assessment was done in 2014. So there is a need to update that in order to be competitive with grant funding, to do a current analysis of what our housing needs are and opportunities within nettle. So under this Housing Planning Grant, we would do the study. Then from the study, we would get recommendations on ways in which we could update our code to encourage alternative and affordable housing. And so some examples might be taking a look at zoning requirements, yard and bulk requirements, other different areas where we would get recommendations from that. The expectation under this grant is that we would at least make one change to code, but of course, we are welcome to make more than one change. From there, if we were to, again, do this program grant, we are then eligible for their incentive funding, which is an opportunity to receive money to be able to do these projects. But you cannot receive the incentive grant funding without the planning, without the housing studies, excuse me, that that needs to be done. So what we're looking for from you today is approval to move forward with this grant. It would be, we'd be applying for $80,000. Approximately $60,000 of that would go towards a housing study. Housing studies typically cost somewhere between $50,000 to $70,000. We're aiming kind of for the middle, although we are a smaller community and could likely get it for closer to 50. The remaining funds will then be used to cover attorney time for the municipal code rewrites. With that, grant does require 25% match though, which is $20,000. We are looking to seek occupational tax funds to do that. We've currently provided that Health and Human Services Subcommittee that was formed. We've given them about $14,000. It's my understanding that they've spent $1,000 and we do anticipate $7,000 more coming to them by the end of this quarter. So we'd like to use the funds already given to them, plus the new set of funds that are set to come in by the end of this month as that match. We did, that Subcommittee did already meet. I believe they've met, but Nicole Cavallino can confirm and sent an email to me this evening that they are hoping to contribute those occupational tax funds as this match because they do see the need for this housing study and what can then be kind of a spin-off of funding opportunities from there. But I would love if possible, Mayor Larson. But I would love if possible, Mayor Larson to have Nicole Cavallino, who is the new Executive Director of the Food Pantry. To maybe to share where that subcommittee's head is at in terms of this request for match funding.
Absolutely. That was gonna be my biggest question. So Nicole, welcome back.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm happy to be back. My biggest, my biggest thought on this grant possibility is the fact that the closing date is actually on March fifteenth. And to get a grant application together for this has to be done pretty quickly. It came to our table just last Friday morning. We met as a committee and we really actually consider the fact that we, in the last two months, have spent approximately a thousand dollars. We've been able to pay some bills with it, which has been so fortunate. But the idea of being able to turn a match around to a minimum of fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. With an, with an actual closing date of fall of 2020. So understandably, that would probably be early 2023 by the time we see it. But let's say this time next year, we have the opportunity to have that much towards a new housing development or plan. That could be happening within town with legal, with legal advice and an actual updated plan. As a committee, we, we talked about it. And as much as we're so grateful to have this occupational tax available to us. The idea of investing it in the, in to serve our community that we see every day that needs housing is such a huge priority. As a committee, we decided this would be definitely worth opening up to. There's also a piece, Miranda, if I could add in. In the grant itself, if you read through the, just through the attachments, there is a way of asking for a lowered minimum match. And I'm hoping that, you know, creatively, we can get together and explain that our town has lost so much through COVID. Our businesses have, our town has, we have limited funding at this point in time. We may not even have to put a full twenty five in, which would be nice, twenty five percent in. So, but I'm happy to work with Miranda, to work with the board in creating this grant program and being supportive of it. Because I have to say, working with the seniors, I saw it, working with town, I've seen it. Now, working with the food pantry, we need housing. So we couldn't as a group say no to the idea of possibly getting this funding our way. So I hope that explains it a little bit.
Yeah, thanks Nicole. And I'm glad you brought that up. I did speak with Chris Lemay, who is our grant funder. And he said, if this is real, we can do this, to come back to him about that discount. So I completely agree. The other thing is, you know, the grant, as Nicole noted, this fifth round is set to close on March fifteenth. We'd love to get this in there. There will be a sixth round of funding that has been confirmed to me, they just haven't released it. But of course, if we can get it in for the fifth round, that would be ideal. Also, their grants manager did say there is a ninety nine percent chance you get this grant as long as you have the match. So it's not a place of, you know, are we going to be accepted or not? It, the more competitive side of this is that incentive grant, by getting the housing planning done. They've been giving the funding to, to basically everyone who has applied has been awarded.
And you think, Miranda, you know, do you think meeting the fifteenth deadline is feasible for town staff?
Yeah, so the, I would follow up with Chris Lemay, if we could get the discount and use the occupational funds that already exist. You know, one of, one of the asks would be to use the thirteen thousand that's already been given to the subcommittee. That way, all of twenty twenty two's funding could go back to that subcommittee to continue to be used. So it's just a slight interruption in their funding stream versus having to take the twenty twenty one funds already given to them plus quarter one of twenty twenty two. So I'd love to try to get that decreased if possible.
All right. Sounds like a great opportunity to me. Tanya, your thoughts?
I think we should go for it, for sure.
All right, Eric?
The, the, what Miranda just described, that last sort of option there is something that I think we should go for. I don't think we should necessarily empty the coffers on, on this, especially if there's a sixth round coming. Then I say, we just wait for the sixth round. But if we are able to do it with last year's funds, then I would be supportive.
There may be an opportunity too, if, if Chris says, you know, there's no way we can offer that discount, which I would be surprised by. Is just looking for town to absorb the cost of the attorney, in which case we would just make the thirteen thousand dollars the twenty five percent match. That is another opportunity here. And we would then just use the funding to solely do the, the, that would kind of be town's kind of match of sorts is the attorney time.
I like that as well. Anything that doesn't drive an account basically down to zero, I am more in favor of.
Sure.
Alan?
I think it's a great opportunity and I'm impressed that, I saw this mentioned in a CML publication just a few weeks ago. And I'm impressed that staff could pull this together so quickly. It's great to have Nicole back on board. You know, we have, housing is a national crisis, a state crisis, and a local crisis. Anything we can do to, to really get the right data, we need to get funding is a big step in the right direction. So definitely something we want to do.
Lindsay?
I think I'm in a little sticker shock with how expensive this is. So, you know, I agree with Eric in, in trying to find the most cost effective way possible to do this. Because, I mean, clearly we know that housing is a problem, especially affordable housing in the area. So if we need the data and we need this to be able to help us find creative solutions for housing, then I'm all for it.
Yeah, I did, I was, that was a big thing when I met with Chris Lemay and then the other DOLA representatives. How vital is this? And, and as they had said, you know, a two thousand and fourteen housing study does not give an accurate picture of what we're experiencing today. And therefore would be unfortunately a hindrance in any future housing funding that would require a study to give insight into what our needs are.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Throw this open to the public before we bring this back to the board for final thoughts. Anyone from the public would like to weigh in on this opportunity to get a Housing Studies Grant pulled together in the next few weeks. Catch our attention? Yeah. Start speaking, come on in with camera, raise your hand. Play the bagpipes. Not, not seeing or hearing any, we'll bring it back to the board. Sounded like a pretty good direction given to town staff in terms of ways to approach this. And then would this come back as a, just on the fifteenth? Or would this be something we address on the first as well, kind of as an update?
I think I would do an update if, if we're able to pull it together for submission by the fifteenth, we'd like to do so. Because I think I have enough.
Right.
To go for it.
I, for some reason, thought we had one meeting between now and the fifteenth. I can't believe it's already March first. Oh, scary, scary. Okay, yeah, so the very next meeting is the fifteenth.
So the next steps would be I'll, I'll connect with DOLA, Chris Lemay is our, gonna our representative to talk about the discount. I will reconnect with Nicole and that subcommittee after talking with Chris Lemay about what that match may look like. If we're not able to get the full twenty five percent or a decrease from twenty five percent. We could look at the town providing that in kind attorney time. And so I think I'll just work then with the subcommittee on how, best strategy for moving forward.
All right, sounds good. Shall we move on to the next grant? A grant type event, the Comp Plan Update.
So I spoke with Mayor Larson and Trusty Kupfizma about this. And I think that request was that I continuously provide updates on the comprehensive plan. So that there's a community understanding of where we're moving forward. The challenge is going to be funding. You really can't get away from spending at least minimum two hundred thousand dollars on a comprehensive plan for a municipality our size. That's a figure I got from DOLA and I did verify with other similar sized communities. So in exploring funding, it looks like DOLA's Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Fund Grant is our best route forward. And that grant may sound familiar to you because we did use it to fund grit removal. We couldn't pursue comprehensive plans at the same time as grit, as they would have been competitive applications. So we needed grit to kind of finalize, which happened just two months ago. So we now could look at this funding stream for comprehensive plans. The caveat is that it's a fifty fifty match, which means town would have to come up with a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars, if not more. Couple options, there's a few grant cycles. There is one coming up in August. We would really have to be looking at, you know, what are kind of our savings look like. We do plan to do supplemental budgets twice a year in the summer and fall. Where we could adjust based on savings that we have and pull the funds together. If, say that was not a possibility though, then we could go for funding in February twenty twenty three. And prioritize this as a part of that budget. So we're not really looking for a decision tonight. We'd just love to hear your feedback on, on what you'd like to see. If you feel like prioritizing this as we look into the supplemental budget for the summer. That would be helpful for Rita and I to know, so we can be scrounging for funds anywhere possible. Otherwise, if you think this is something we could just aim to budget for, then we won't, we won't, I guess, focus too much on that. So we'd just like to hear your thoughts. Comprehensive plan should be done every ten years. Our last one was done in two thousand and thirteen. So starting in twenty twenty three would be fine. However, it does take about a year to get through the whole process, including all the public vetting. So that is kind of one of the downfalls of starting in twenty twenty three is you wouldn't look to close because we wouldn't find the, the awards until June. You wouldn't be closing that document until twenty twenty four. So love to hear your thoughts.
All right, and we'll, we'll let Alan kick us off with his thoughts on this one.
Well, I guess it's my turn for sticker shock.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
No idea comprehensive plans cost this much. But it is what it is. I guess that's because we need to hire consultants to run the show, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it really is. And I connected with a few consultants to verify and they said this, that was a pretty accurate number. And so we weren't even sure, DOLA was concerned, a tier one is really easy, can be passed administratively. Which means Chris Lemay really could pass it for us, but a tier two requires a more thorough application review. He said, it's highly unlikely we'd be able to get in a tier one because two hundred thousand is being very conservative. And, and many won't do it for that amount, which I was surprised by as well.
I guess my question would be, I think it's something that needs to be done and we, you know, there's no question, we need to do it and do it right. Because it's a legal document and it's very important. And we've had a lot of community support for the previous comprehensive plan. And we've had a lot of community support for the idea of revising the comp plan. And my question would be, is there anything we can do in the meantime to start the process through the planning commission? And start gathering input, you know, just having the document sent back out to the public and start gathering community feedback. Which might give us a bit of a head starter, we just, is that too much to ask?
Yeah, I, I think we kind of did that under envision. We definitely have some great feedback under that process. I do think as town staff, we do not have the expertise to push forward a comprehensive plan type project. And that's why we need the experts. I think we saw that in envision as, as ideas started really coming forward. We didn't have the capacity to keep them rolling and organized and centralized on specific goals. The one thing DOLA did encourage us to do however, is like spin off plan. Like a housing, master infrastructure, say a tourism. Because every kind of smaller plan you have will ultimately just tie into the comprehensive plan. So the more of these smaller scale studies, the cheaper the comprehensive plan will be. Because we'll already, because we'll, we have the two MIPs, we have the rate study, hopefully we'll have the housing study. We could, that could really help us. And so that was their recommendation is to, while it does feel piecemealed. But try and pursue as many of those project specific or areas that can have supplemental studies done for them.
Yeah, I like that idea. And I think I do see overlap certainly as you do. Between what we did in the envision process and the information we needed for the comp plan. So hopefully we can leverage that information and all that good effort that took place on the envision process. So anyway, I do think it's important and we need to figure out how to play for it, so.
Lindsay?
I think that the comprehensive plan is a very important document, referenced a lot in town. And certainly I use it a lot on the planning commission. So I think, you know, we have to find a way to come up with those funds one way or another. And, yeah, I think, I think it's something to move forward with.
Tanya?
Sorry, hold up. There we are. Um, yeah, I was just looking, I was just looking at the comprehensive plan from two thousand and thirteen on another screen. And I'm like, God, I see, I feel like two hundred thousand, I feel like you could just like copy and paste just some new words in the same format of what's already there. Like I just, I'm really sticker shocked. And how much did it cost in two thousand and thirteen? I'm curious.
I don't have, unfortunately, we don't have those records because that's before our assist. We can do a little bit more searching, but I don't have.
I'm just curious how it was paid for, like what they did then to do it.
I vaguely remember the cost was roughly eighty thousand dollars. And we had a lot of money at that point from DOLA. They gave us a grant to cover it.
And DOLA is what you guys are thinking would be the best option? Does, but don't we use that for lots of other, I always hear DOLA this.
DOLA does a lot of different things. DOLA has a lot of different.
And you apply to different DOLA grants throughout the year? Like, it's not like you just get this one?
No, yeah, I mean, this, again, this, this funding cycle here, this energy and minerals, what we use for grit. And you can, as soon as that was kind of closed up and we signed the contract, we could move forward with the next. I did explore if there was funding that could do a comprehensive plan in its entirety. I was told that, you know, currently municipalities budget for it because it's statutorily required. And that this is the only funding cycle they have to offer. Now Jennifer Waltz, our grant writer, is looking into others, but she has too, has not been able to find anything outside of what we're highlighting here. But of course, we'll keep looking. And I'm not sure if, and I, Mayor Larson, maybe you know, the comprehensive plan with two thousand and thirteen is called an update. And it's not necessarily like a full rewrite. And so that may be that two hundred thousand dollars is to do a full comprehensive rewrite, not just an update of that two thousand and thirteen. And I would maybe argue, we need to look at it from a much broader scale. Because there's a lot missing from the comprehensive plan that I think would help us, you know, things like annexation, infill. And, and, and those types of projects that we really need to dive into from where we are, kind of politically speaking. There's a lot more in front of the board.
Yep.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's one of those things that we kind of have to do and we have to hire it out. It costs what it costs. So I guess, yeah, I guess I'd say, yeah, keep looking for funding and see what we can do. But, um, I mean, a fifty fifty match sounds really difficult for us right now, doesn't it?
Yeah, as of right now, we couldn't do it. So that's why our recommendation is Rita and I will take a look mid-year at where we might have savings. And where we could combine savings from different line items and do a supplemental budget to possibly fund the fifty fifty. And then of course, if we, if we can't, we would then just look to budget for twenty twenty three. And I think, I mean, is, is foregoing some CIP projects in order to make this happen. And that's not our goal either. And so Rita and I will continue to kind of keep a pulse on our budget and see if there's just a way in which through various.
Yeah, I just, like, I hate to take away money from the things that, tangible things that are real. That are in our envision and in our comprehension plan that we need to pay for just for a piece of paper. But, um, you know, I know you don't want to do that either. And I don't know if Boulder's got any ability to help us at all with all their tons of money they just recently got, but.
Yeah, so unfortunately, ARPA funds, because I was like, oh, can ARPA funds use, help us with the housing and all sorts of things? ARPA funds have, can only be matched to federal grants. It can't be matched to these local.
Oh, I gotcha.
Unfortunately.
Okay. And, well, okay, well, I know you guys are on it. We have a grant person looking at it. But maybe there's a federal grant out there that can help with this, who knows? All right, well, thanks. All right, well, thanks for bringing this to us. I don't really have any real advice. I mean, just, I guess we have to do it, it's like.
Yeah, this is kind of an update item.
Yeah.
Eric?
Um, yeah, so I think, I think we need to do this sooner rather than later. I honestly, I felt like because the comp plan update is, has been so long ago, even though we only need one every ten years, I feel like for some things, we've been in kind of a holding pattern because we don't have a new comp plan, and because we know there's going to be a new comp plan, and we're sort of like, well, we can't do this until the new comp plan comes out. The new comp plan hasn't come out yet, so I would really love to solve that problem to get us kind of, you know, moving again in all those sorts of directions. I mean, we are doing, doing well in terms of sidewalk projects and things like that, but there's, there's a lot more to do, and I think getting that comp plan done is going to be really important. I also think it's important from a community perspective. We need to, to build on Envision and follow through on the process that felt like it started and now feels like it's stalled. And I think that it's important to keep that energy going. So I would really go for that, that first cycle, if we can do it and find the money in a supplemental budget to, to make that happen. I also think obviously, we're going to probably need to go for the tier two if we want to do a full revision of the comp plan, because I will say the, the only other thing I want, well, maybe it's not the only other thing, but an important thing that I wanted to say about this was that I, I think that I've been reviewing town ordinances of other municipalities near us and in other states. And I think there's a lot of scope for our comp plan to be a lot more present in our decision making. And I think that it, it hasn't been particularly present since I've been on the BOT at least. And I think I would like to see it be more present, and in that, in that sense, we can update our, you know, town ordinances to maybe rely on the comp plan a bit more, rather than some of the more wishy washy language that we have in those ordinances relating to the comp plan. And in order to do that, the comp plan needs to be rock solid. And it needs to not contradict itself. It needs to be consistent, and it needs to be comprehensive, as is in the name. And right now, while it's a beautiful document that we have right now, and I really love it, and I'm really quite attached to it from a personal perspective, there's a lot of things that it doesn't provide for, and we really need those provisions in order to, to move forward here, I think, as a town. So I really think we need to prioritize this. I know that the price is, is really ludicrously high. I mean, it's, it's really bonkers, but I think we have to, we have to pay for it, and we have to get it done. And I think it's important from a community infrastructure kind of standpoint, and maybe more or less tangible infrastructure standpoint, then maybe we're giving it credit for. So I really hope that we prioritize this as much as possible.
I, I agree with Eric. I mean, not going to be here to help find, deal with that budget, but I do think it is critical that we move forward on this, and hopefully that supplemental, we can find some savings and make it happen. But I also have high hopes that you guys can work at the grant magic and find something there to help cut down those costs.
Always the goal.
Anyone from the public like to weigh in on this? Yet another grant opportunity, or I guess there's an update on possible grant opportunities, and I see a hand popping straight up. Karen Blakemore, welcome. You're still muted, Karen.
I'm in favor of doing the update sooner rather than later. This is the primary guiding document for our town, and it's out of date. And it, it includes, one of the components of the comprehensive plan is land use, including a map of the intended development pattern for the town, which is very critical when we're looking at an agreement with Boulder County concerning potential annexations into the town. So I am totally in favor of updating this in an orderly fashion, as soon as we can find the funds for it.
Thanks, Karen. Anyone else?
I'd like to make public comment. Kathleen Chippie. I am for this happening ASAP. I appreciate what Eric is saying. I'm going to agree with what Karen just said. And I feel like this is one of the most important documents in the community, though I don't feel like we're past due, because it was twenty thirteen, and now we're coming on to twenty twenty two. So we're nine years, so we're not past due. But I do believe that a lot of people put a lot of time and energy into Envision twenty thirty, and we're expecting this to happen a lot sooner. And a lot should be based on this, because from ordinance language, through the history of town, the comp plan is the most important document, even though it's not legally binding, it does have a lot of significance in previously written codifications of the code. And so I think it would benefit the community if this happens sooner rather than later. And I kind of agree with what Tanya said, that it's, the sticker shock seems huge. And honestly, when I look at the twenty thirteen plan versus the, what the Envision twenty thirty people said, it's very similar to what the twenty thirteen comp plan was. And I'm not so sure that it should cost as much as it is, because I think it can be evaluated by some intelligent people in the community and could probably be rewritten at a much more reasonable price, doing it, the town's residents on its own, because I don't believe there's much that veers very off of the twenty thirteen plan. I probably want to go further, but I think it's very similar. That's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thanks for the update, Miranda. Good luck.
I have one more thing, sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Eric.
I completely forgot to mention it. That's why I knew there was something else. I appreciate the idea that we could make it cheaper by filling out some of the smaller plans first. But to me, it's a fundamental conflict or sort of oxymoron in a way, because it seems to me that the smaller plans should flow from the comp plan and not vice versa, that the comp plan should kind of guide us in forming those trails master plans and master infrastructure plans and these other kinds of documents. And I do, I, I, I hope that we resist the temptation to kind of fill out all the little plans first and then hire someone for two hundred thousand dollars to copy paste our smaller plans into a comp plan. Like, I really hope the comp plan is itself a document and that the rest of them can flow from there.
And that is, I will say, that is, that Dola does agree. I think that's, they, they view that as an opportunity to try and lessen the cost, but fundamentally, they would say the space of the same is that, you know, this is truly our guiding document. And so investing in it and finding a way to invest in it and letting Dola at least be the fifty fifty match, it's better than having to fund it in its entirety. And so the plan is to continue to bring this back as an informational item as Rita and I find the funding. And then when we do so, which hopefully will be in the summer, we would aim to apply for that grant cycle of twenty twenty two.
All right. Thank you, Miranda. One more discussion item, but it's not a grant, so.
Great. Not right now, the next time. Okay. So this is like keeping animals ordinance. So I just wanted to kind of explain why this, how this came to be. We had some Netherlands residents contact town with questions just about kind of keeping animals within town limits. Our code really actually only speaks to chickens, horses, and lamas. But we have seen the integration of other animals, domestic livestock into town. And so there was just kind of a feeling of perhaps it's time for town to look at zoning code as it relates to animals, such as maybe how many animals someone could have based on lot size, as well as just revisiting kind of the health and sanitation standards for animals. What is before you, this proposed code change for keeping animals ordinance was prepared by community members. So staff have not, are kind of officially weighed in on this. However, that was built really looking at Boulder County's code, which limits, kind of talks about animals as units and how many units can you have based on zone. So what we're looking for tonight is, is kind of a question before you is whether or not you'd like town staff to work with the planning commission on some possible zoning code amendments. Our, our thought would be, that's the first place to start, similar to how we did marijuana. And then based on whatever changes may come from zoning, the board of trustees could later look at licensing under chapter six and health sanitation and just general animal rulings under chapter seven. So we're looking for feedback from you on whether or not kind of there's a nod for to keep moving forward with this.
We'll kick this one off with you, Tanya.
I'm just really curious, like, these community members who put this together, where, where was this born out of?
So this was born out of concerns of some parcels, bringing out a variety of different domestic livestock and worried about how many they had for their parcel size and whether or not they would be.
Like, was it noise? Was it smell?
It was really from animal care, the health, sanitation, and safety of the animals. I'm concerned that they didn't have the, it wasn't an appropriate environment for them, based on how many there were and how many were sharing similar kind of living situations. And so it did, it was kind of an animal safety, potentially even an animal cruelty concern. And that currently town, you could have twenty llamas in your, in your yard, because there is no zoning limitation, and that maybe we need to take a look at what is realistic for a lot size, and that also adds into the, the health and safety of the animal. And so we're not doing like overcrowding.
Well, I mean, I, I agree with this in principle. I'm just like really concerned that town would have the staff to be on top of this. And also something about like four domestic pets per household seemed a little ridiculous to me. Like, it just seems a little overreaching, again, of people's personal property rights. And I just wonder if there wouldn't be a better way to address it. I agree that we, you shouldn't overcrowd in a, I mean, I'm wondering if we could just approach this more from an area of the code of where, you know, you're talking about noise or smell or, I don't know, it just. I mean, I don't think we should just go by Boulder either, because we're not Boulder. And, and that's, and that's another one. We're not Boulder. I don't think we should tell people how many pets they should have in their house. Just as a general rule, I think it should be based on a certain criteria of what is neglect and what is humane. And that's going to be hard to gauge and to codify. But I, I really, you know.
Yeah, I think that's why we're kind of looking at kicking this to the planning commission, because there are a lot of those kinds of questions. And, you know, certainly, a, a house in Old Town on, you know, point zero seven acres is a very different situation than somebody on a, you know, acre and a half in Big Springs. And that's why we thought it was a zoning.
Somebody tell me how many dogs I can have. I mean, yeah, yeah, you can kick it to the planning commission, but I don't know. I mean, it's going to come back around several times, I'm sure, so.
Okay. Eric?
I think if this is going to be approached, I mean, first of all, I want to thank the folks who put together that kind of slick presentation. Obviously, some work and thought was put into this. And not that. Sorry. I agree with Tanya on principle here. Like, I think limiting the number of pets that you can have on your property is not really something I'm interested in pursuing necessarily. I do agree fundamentally, though, that it, if there's no other enforcement mechanism to protect the health, well-being, and rights of animals, if there's no other enforcement mechanism other than something we need to do in town code, then maybe we need to put something in town code. But I think it really needs to be targeted to that priority, if that is, in fact, the concern, right? So I don't think it should be based on sort of, you know, you know, questions of it being an eyesore or, or those sorts of things. I, I'm not, I'm not really interested in those arguments. So if we're looking at it from a, from an animal welfare perspective, we're going to need to see some, some real data on what animal welfare looks like and how much space some of these types of animals actually need. And then we need also to make sure that we have a way of keeping people in compliance. But yeah, I, I'm, I'm loathe to, to, to make these things like completely numeric, because I feel like it's sort of like a datification of the world that isn't necessarily accurate to lived experience. And so I would like to see some more information on how this helps protect animals. And I think it's going to, going to have to be based on the animal type. Like, I'm not too keen on boiling animals down to animal units. I find that a slightly disturbing way of looking at a, of a living creature. So I'm not sure I would like to put that in at Oldenstown Code personally. But I, I'm very receptive to the idea that we might need to step up for the rights of other creatures and other living beings. I just would like it to maybe be centered very firmly around that and have some real information to back that up.
Alan?
I think it's worthy of a planning commission community discussion. I do think, you know, I think you have to think about the neighbors. If someone has multiple dogs, they don't clean up the feces, and a lot of them like to bark. I mean, we do have some protection on noise, but I do think there should be, you know, a discussion about what, what is a reasonable number. And see what the community thinks.
Okay. Lindsay?
I, I think this is something that's very important to discuss, and I would love to have the planning commission's input on this as well. So I think sending it to them first is a good first step.
Thank you, Lindsay. Yeah, I think this is something we need to address carefully, because things like, you know, question, you know, thoughts that Tanya brought up, it's a fine line between, you know, your domestic animals, you're, you have the cat that never leaves the house, and if you have ten of them in your house, but they never leave, fine, but where is the line between a domestic pet? End, you know, is, is the house goat a pet? Is, you know, domestic animals versus farm versus, this is a, this is a complicated thing, and certainly something that, well, clearly, we're not making any decisions about tonight, I think, is worthy of discussion for the planning commission. I think it is kind of a, a good chapter sixteen place to begin, looking at the zoning, because it is based on, you know, it is a zoning type of question. And I think it is something we might see more of in the future. I know I've certainly heard about the, the reasons for this coming before the board have, I've, I've gotten emails and had people talk to me about them, the, the current reasons. So I'm totally in favor of sending this to the planning commission. I hope they can really kick off a robust community discussion there about the, the pros and cons about different approaches. And I agree with kind of with some things Eric said. I don't necessarily want us coming to animal units or whatever it was called, where, you know, oh, you have two hundred chickens, that's three point five units. And now, that's, that's getting out of control. I think there's a better logical way for, for Nederland to do what is right for Nederland in this kind of situation.
And one, one thing I'll just, and I guess it's humorous now, but it wasn't at the time when I was on the Ford County City Council. We had a very contentious debate, because people had neighbors' cats coming over and killing birds. And so they brought forward an idea that cats should be leashed, same as dogs. And then the counter was, okay, if you want your, me to leash my cat, you need to leash your bird. And believe it or not, we had two really long contentious meetings about that. So I'm hoping we can avoid that.
I, I can totally believe it, because when I was a child, my dad was on the Lafayette City Council for one year because he was appointed to a vacancy and then pushed for a cat leash law because of all the cats coming to use my sister and I's giant sandbox in the backyard as a town litter box. And so hi- his introduction to town politics didn't last for. And so his introduction to town politics didn't last for very long. So I totally can see where that's going to come come before us. But, you know, this is something we are sounds like we are interested in kicking this to the planning commission. But we'll give anyone from the public a chance to let us here now and then recommend they all also go to the planning commission. So if anyone would like to weigh in on this for the public now, I see a hand up from well, I saw a hand up for Karen Blakemore, but I think that hand was still up from the previous one. I didn't see that go down, but.
Oh, I did put it down and back up.
Oh, okay, good. Sorry, I missed that go down. So Karen, go right ahead.
So being a commissioner on the planning commission, we would welcome discussion of animals and zoning and all things related to that.
Good, I'm I'm glad we're giving you work you're welcome to take. I see a hand up here to, is it Cece?
Constance.
Constance, oh, hey.
Yeah, I believe that we're part of the reason that this has come in front of the board. We do have a goat and some chicken. And I just wanted to address some of the animal animal welfare discussion because we've had neighbors concerned about this. And I think part of it is maybe just education about, yeah, like a goat is obviously different from a cat or a dog. But I just wanted to point out, I guess, I'm not really weighing on whether or not this should be going to the planning commission, but that there is animal control. And we've, you know, in our case, they've come and they, you know, everything was was fine. And I don't think that, I don't really know if they respond to the neighbors then to sort of make sure that they understand the situation is is totally fine. I don't really know what the process is there, but that they are a type of authority that controls that. And that, I mean, they've seen, they seem really receptive both to complaints and also, I mean, they've come and we've had very positive experiences with them. So, yeah, just wanted to point that out. Yeah, and we'll, we'd love to be involved in any discussion related to the keeping of these animals in the future, if it does keep going.
Thank you, Constance. Any other members of the public?
I'd like to get public comment.
I heard Kathleen, I heard someone else should come back. Kathleen, go ahead.
Kathleen Shipai, thirty year resident, eighteen year business owner. So I don't quite understand why we're discussing it. I believe there's laws on the books that handle animal welfare right now. I it's, I don't think it's legal, by the way. I mean, town already has something about licensing on horses. And I believe there's only one horse permit, and you need an acre, I believe. But I don't like, I agree with Tanya and Eric, I don't like regulating how many animals anyone can have in their house or at their house. There's already noise ordinances. There's, if there was a problem with the smell of waste, then people can call and and Safe Bill can come and tell somebody that their yard is not cleaned up. But I don't like to limit people, especially when it comes to goats, which can provide milk and cheese. And chickens, I don't like any animals that people might want to have where they can be getting eggs or meat from or dairy. I think those are important things. Netherlands was always a self sufficient type of community. When you read the ordinances, crop production is allowed in every single zone except the central business district because that was always encouraged. And and I don't like people having to be limited on dogs, cats, anything like that. I don't, I'm not quite understanding what the problem that got us here is. I I guess Cece might know more about that because she thinks she's involved. So but I do believe that if there's, there's already animal welfare situations out there. If someone is concerned that somebody's animals aren't being treated properly, there are people to call and they will come and check out the situation. And and maybe there needs to be more communication with the neighbors who complained on how that was actually rectified or resolved or, you know, in this case, there was apparently no problem. So I and I'm concerned about property rights because I see them just dwindling away every time the board gets some idea put in front of it. It seems to be having a lot to do with lots of property rights. And I don't think it's anybody's business how many fish or dogs or cats or rabbits or any other animal. And unless there's an animal welfare problem. And like I said, everything already exists. I think it's a waste of time to put this in front of the planning commission. And we don't need to over regulate ourselves out of existence. And let's give more credit to animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. I heard another person speak at the same time.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Just identify yourself and the floor will be yours.
Yes, this this is Laura King. And I support the planning commission and the BOT reviewing Netherlands Animal Code. Proposed changes would not affect any household animals. The new code would just allow the town to help define livestock. Allowing unlimited livestock on any size plot of land in any zoning district leads to inhumane conditions for animals, and it's a nuisance to neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I saw a hand go up from KG.
Hi, Kim GoHo, Netherlands resident. I, it's funny that Laura just said this. I too feel like that the proposed changes are not related to domestic pets, and it's more along the lines of livestock. If there are regulations already in place for chickens, horses and llamas, then it makes sense personally that there should be regulations for goats and pigs and ducks and what other animals there are. And I I understand we don't need an algebraic equation for it based on the amount of land anyone has. However, if if someone has to apply to have chickens on their land, for example, and supply information about how much land they have, why does the same not be said for people who want to have pigs in town? So, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Linda Glasser.
Linda.
And I am on the planning commission, and I think it should move forward. There are issues that need to be revisited with the planning commission. And I would like to see this addressed and some of the issues resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else? All right. Well, Miranda, it sounds like this definitely needs to go to the planning commission.
Okay, we will bring it before them at their meeting this month in March.
All right. Trustees, any last thoughts from what we heard? On this issue, not other business yet, but anyone else, any last things on the animals?
I think that the confusion on the domestic animals versus livestock is because that Boulder County attachment that's been provided does have regulations regarding how many domestic animals you can have. So just throwing that out there, and I'm just, you know, for my personal, doesn't doesn't mean obviously not the whole BOT. But from my personal perspective, if the planning commission could focus on that animal welfare side of things rather than on the kind of restrictive land use side of things, I think that that would be good. And if there are ways that this is already addressed, I really don't think Netherlands should duplicate laws that are already in place and enforcement agencies that are already in place regarding animal welfare. So just, I urge them to take a look at it, absolutely, but to look at it through, hopefully, that lens.
I do think we have a unique situation similar to marijuana that this crosses over into quite a few different chapters. So, of course, the planning commission will only be looking at this from kind of a chapter sixteen, and that would be zoning in terms of permitting or additional standards that are needed for health and welfare. That will be something we'll have to come back before the board of trustees. But I think starting this with the planning commission will be good because it'll help to give an idea of, is this a zoning sixteen challenge? Or is this tightening up maybe chapter seven? The one thing that should be noted is that town does not have a definition for domestic livestock, and therefore we turn to state statute, and that creates some confusion. And so I do think tightening up, at the very least, even that definition of the different animals and how we categorize them would be helpful here.
Or even pointing clearly to state statute in town code where we're pointing to that would be useful might be a way to go as well, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only concern is that state statute is that overly clear. It just kind of got here in the first place was like, are are certain animals allowed? And it was a lot of kind of roundabout. So I do think this is a long discussion will be happening, but starting with the planning commission seems appropriate.
Like you said, it is a long discussion. So those who, you know, clearly this touched on a nerve for a lot of people. We've had more comments on this than all of those, all of those grant opportunities combined. So I encourage everyone to stay involved. I I just also, you know, want to reiterate some people said is, I think, preserving sort of the idea of urban homesteading as an option. And because we've talked about food security and localizing our food sources and being able to do that in town and finding a way to do that, you know, in the right way for the animals and the right way for our neighbors, I think would be really incredible achievement for this next board. And I love being able to just, you know, pound that off on the next board. It's all on you and Tanya. Looking at you, Eric, you and Eric and Tanya. All right. That is our discussion items for this evening. Thank you all. Any trustees have other business they'd like to raise? I have one. I've been approached, and this is kind of another sort of a hate to say punting it to the next board because it is kind of a longer discussion, but I want to raise it now because it's been brought to my attention as a as an issue in some parts of town. Sort of, it's another neighbor relation type of issue where you have individuals who have worked hard to do wildfire mitigation. They've made the hard choices to cut down trees. They're, you know, small lots, their next door neighbor has not done the same. And they're now at risk of having, you know, trees fall in a house in a windstorm or having, you know, the fire risk of overtaking it. And so it's a kind of a difficult question of how you personal safety, your safety of your home being put in the hands of your neighbor. And I don't quite know how we can address this as a board. I don't know if there is anything we can do on those kinds of fronts when you have a neighbor who has a tree that leans over your house or is a is a threat to your house and doesn't do anything about it. So I'm just going to throw this out there as this is something that's been brought to my attention by a resident here in town. I was going to bring it up with you, Miranda, in our conversation tomorrow, but I wanted to bring it up for the whole board because, you know, time is limited here. And this may be something that the next board can help take a look at. Because it is, it's a concern. You know, certainly I've seen trees out my window come down in the last couple of windstorms. Fortunately, they've just fallen in yards and missed everything. But I know certainly if if a tree were hanging over a certain my house, that would be more worrisome. So I don't know what there is that can be done about that kind of neighbor relation where one neighbor kind of, their trees are a risk to another. But throwing it out there is something.
And I do think that this is, it's going to come, it's going to have to come at some point. There's going to be standards for fuel on people's properties that people are going to need to meet when it comes to wildfire. I I don't know so much about the windy tree situation, but I mean, especially in the wildfire context. I think that this conversation is going to is is happening and going to continue to happen. What I would say is that I do think that town also needs to get its house in order in that regard. We have a lot of small properties that are not mitigated, that are a complete mess, frankly, and that's no, nobody, it, nobody's individual fault. And it's not even really town's fault. But it is time for us to like really think about how we're going to address town properties in that way. And and at that point, I think that it's easier to have a conversation expecting private property owners to at least match what the town is willing to do and finding resources for them, finding expertise for them, finding ways to make sure that, you know, they use wildfire partners, which, you know, I think are great. And they provide that assessment completely free. You don't have to do it, right? They just come to your property and they tell you what would be the right thing to do. And then you can take it or leave it. I think that getting more people involved in at least that assessment process would be really helpful because then at least we know what could be done or what needed to be done. So I think that there's a lot of steps to making this sort of a reality. And and a lot of it has to come from town side first. And then finding resources and finding ways to to help people mitigate their their lands is going to be huge. And I think that will go a long way to those kind of windy tree problems as well if if we were doing wildfire mitigation and framed it in that context.
There's a grant for that. Is currently working with Teens Inc. and the Boulder Waterside Collective on a Strategic Wildfire Action Program Workforce Development Grant, which would allow us to do the youth, right, the youth workforce to do all of our mitigation on town property in collaboration with the fire department. We'd have to provide kind of the oversight, but it does seem like we are in a good place to potentially be awarded this funding. So more to come, but it is something we're looking at all the time. There's also an IMA committee dedicated just solely to wildfire mitigation where we're looking at a lot of different funding sources. And so town, AAA, fire department, watershed collective, and Teens Inc. are also part of that. And so there's a lot of mitigation stuff that should be coming forward soon, as well as the possible funding for maybe even Big Springs.
Yeah, and I think that it's really important, like, I mean, when I lived in Boulder, we were in an HOA. And, you know, we had neighbors looking over their fences to see if we had dandelions in our yard and reporting us, right? And we don't want to create a situation with town code or with any kind of policy that that I think encourages that kind of, you know, what I would say is unneighborly behavior. I think it should be grounded in our safety as a community and our kind of shared responsibilities and stewardship of the land, not in sort of nitpicking over each other's, you know, way of organizing our landscapes.
We'll do another grant night. I'll just give you more information on grants.
I say, I swear that wasn't a setup just so you could talk about another grant, Miranda.
Let me tell you about, I have a whole folder dedicated to grants right now.
But also, Miranda, those those projects, I think they need to produce something beyond just the mitigation itself. They need to produce documentation, maybe like handy guides that can be on the town website that give like little charts on like how far away is, you know, the the juniper from your house? Like, how how close together are your are your lodge poles versus your ponderosas versus your limbers? Like, getting all this stuff out there in clearly accessible, easy to read ways, providing kind of training and education on it will be a huge help moving forward. So we have that strong foundation to build from.
Different grant. So there is that grant that we applied for for the Colorado Wildfire Protection Plan that would do just that. It would create a plan for Netherlands and identifying our risks. But then there also is a huge public outreach component, and that would do with the watershed. We're with you. We're just seeing to get the money, but we're aiming.
Looking forward to it.
Any non-grant other business?
I I just have a question for town staff. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, my question is just related to the storing of personal property on town property. That, do we have any ordinances allowing that or can we charge a rental fee?
Yeah, I actually recently spoke with Marshall Johns about that. And I think his biggest concern is that we all, we don't have any of our, not all of our town parcels are signed in a way that would designate temporary parking or whatever that might be. And that without appropriate signage, the enforcement piece gets a little tricky. We, of course, have certain lots that we rent out, like the community center, but without proper signage of all town parcels of, you know, anything related to parking or use enforcement.
I mean, I feel like if we're not careful, it can just open up the door for people to start storing whatever trash, junk, cars, whatever on town properties and parks, if we don't have any kind of way to enforce them to stay off of town property. And and I certainly don't want to give preference to one. And and I certainly don't want to give preference to one person over another saying, oh, well, this one person gets special treatment. And they can use town property as they see fit, but, you know, others can't. So I want to be careful that we're not doing that.
I do believe that Marshall Johns is planning to connect with Public Works to get their feedback. Because like like the PETA, there are signs that says like no parking overnight parking and looking at that for especially the different lots where parking is allowed. And was going to kind of assess with them best strategies for those locations.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else?
Are there plans to put signs on all of town property then?
Not at this time. And so I think Larry was going to kind of do a little research, see what made the most sense and then work that out with Public Works about the proper signage.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know it was an issue, but it sounds like a really easy solution starts. Well, I'm I don't know if we can talk about it here, but what what is going to happen with the position of the mayor? Are we going to reopen that up to the public or?
It's going to be for the next board to determine.
And also like. It should go, I mean.
Yeah, nothing's happened till it's happened, though. So you can't really preempt things that haven't actually occurred until they're actually occurring.
Seems like. Okay, doesn't sound good. All right.
But I definitely think, Tanya, that it would be worth, you know, talking offline about that.
Yeah. All right.
Mary, I think, can I? Oh, sorry, go ahead, trustee Corvillan issue.
No, no, I'm done.
Oh, I just wanted to jump in that at the last board of trustees meeting, trustee Corvillan and trustee Taylor had talked about the Safe Belt survey. So the Abaki did pull together an awesome survey. We've sent it to the board for your feedback. Our goal would be to release that to the community, do about a month's worth of outreach to get feedback. We'd like to then use those survey results to sit down with Safe Belt and say, you know, here's how the community feels. Are there ways to improve this relationship while simultaneously meeting with other vendors who do the same work? And then also I will present a proposal if town wanted to consider bringing building officials internally. And so that would come before the new board in May. So but the community can expect to see that survey soon. And then speaking of survey, the parking survey is still out there and has a deadline of March 11. We would love for people to take it. And I believe last time I looked, it had 50 some odd responses from at least the resident.
I have I have other businesses brief. I forwarded on a request from the Colorado Communities for Climate Action, CC4CA. To see if my fellow elected officials would like to sign on to a letter going to the Public Utilities Commission. Asking that they not allow Excel to continue to put millions of dollars into their failed coal plant known as Comanche and Pueblo. And then hand the bill to the ratepayers and continue to burn coal indefinitely for longer than we thought. So it's a pretty good letter. I forwarded it on. I know we're all too, we're all too busy to look at it.
No, I I saw it, Alan, but if they close it, I'm just curious. It it's not going to affect the supply to people's homes or whatever. Still working, just inefficient, but.
It's been out of commission most of the time.
Oh, it's not even, okay, I didn't understand. I was like, I thought it was just really.
I want to spend another $11 million.
Okay.
Before they retire it completely. And that's money that could go to putting solar panels on people's homes in Netherlands, for example. There are much better ways to spend that money. And then rather than charging the ratepayers, they hand the bill to us. And there are at least three more rate increases being proposed by Excel right now. That's not what this letter is about. Anyway, take a look at it if you can sign on big red.
Yeah, thanks for passing that along, Alan. I know I signed it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Who wants the honors?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. Macy.
Neil Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Act.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth. Trustee Corvillan.
Yes.
And trustee Kums Esma.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, guys. Have a wonderful evening.
You too.